So, welcome everyone this evening. We're trying something new. There are attendees that are coming online to our Zoom session. As those numbers build up, I want to give it a second because we have an adorably young lady who has been very patient and waiting to lead us in the pledge. Her name, her first name is London. Can you pronounce your last name, sweetheart? McCaglia, it's a one. So, as I call this meeting to order, it is the Seneca Valley School District's School Board Work Session. It is October 5th. As I call this meeting to order with no gavel. We haven't had a gavel before. I'd ask if we could be just a team member or pitch a question. We're just going to take a moment of silence to think about people that we care about. Thank you, everyone. With that, I'll turn it to President Dr. Pecations to introduce.
I would ask that you join me in welcoming our Island of the Pledge student for this evening. London McCaglia is a first grader at Brown Elementary School. Let's welcome London. London is the daughter of Crystal Brown. Crystal's behind the camera. And Jason Caglia from the audience. She was nominated this evening for Island of the Pledge. I was in Harvard, it's called Brown Elementary. Ms. Harper is joining us as well for being here. In addition to her joining us is Ms. Hannah Hamilton. Hannah is London's first grade teacher at Brown. And we thank you for being there and supporting London. London tells us her favorite subjects are art. Yes. And they create for the Canadian Innovation Research Center, also known as SER. One day, when she's all grown up, London would like to be a hooker. London, can you tell us what your favorite sweet treat was? Okay. We all agree with that. London is the big sister of twin girls who happen to be celebrating their first birthday today. Very patient. London, can you tell us your sisters' names?
Aquino, Bristol.
Aquino, Bristol. Happy birthday to your sisters. I hear that you are an amazing big sister and that you're very, very fortunate to have a big sister who looks around them. Just as we're fortunate to have you here with us this evening to say I'm of the pledge. So this time, I would ask the board, the public, and all of those of whom to stand and join us if we were able for Island of the Pledge. London, if you are ready, you can begin.
I'm glad to know you just came to the class. What can I say to America? It didn't really happen like, but let's just stand. Information. I'm glad I entered this school. Ready and justice.
London was given a special Island of the Pledge t-shirt. A sentence like that, as well as a mouth that she still receives this evening. So I don't have any more questions or anything I'd like to say. She's willing to have to use the microphone.
I'll just say I'm so thankful that you're here. So thank you, thank you very much. And when you are older and achieve your dream of being a painter, would you maybe bring back some of your delicious crepes with the joy? And just be. The other thing I want to say is that it's a thank you to Harper and, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but to have her, you know, the teacher here to discuss this part. So we, we have been remote for so long and all of the love of both together is, is, and then we're like, London, so thank you for being here. So. Thank you, sweetheart. Thanks again. Okay. Unfortunately, now we have to move on to the business. Unfortunately, but that's where we got to go. With that, Lisa, please call me here.
Ms. Raydell. Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Ms. Patterson. Here. Mr. Hester.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Daniel Hall.
Yes. Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Waddle.
Here.
And Mr. Wooderson.
Here.
Thank you, Lisa. With that, we'll turn to, you know, our session. Are you remaining for four to start with? Sweet with that recognition, Ms. Andrews, please.
Thank you once again, Mr. President. Two items of recognition this evening. Our first item, Seneca Valley junior vocalist Alex Comodier, Attender 2, and Senior Instrumentalist Lizzie Silvers, a bass player, qualified to participate in the National Association for Music Education All-National Honor Ensemble. To be eligible for the national level, students who already have participated in the state level festival in their homes during the previous school year. In addition, we had to submit an audition video for consideration. Although the actual in-person festival was unfortunately canceled due to pandemic, it does not change the extremely prestigious accomplishment of both Alex and Lizzie. We applaud and congratulate both of them for being recognized on a national level for their musical talents and education. And our second item, being kind or wonders for Ms. Katie Rengers, fourth grade classroom teacher at Dean Elementary School. The class was recently gained a winner in the Penguin Rhythm House Wonder Kindness Challenge. Students shared with Ms. Rengers acts of kindness they saw each other doing, and then each time a cotton ball was added to their kindness chart. Prizes included school planners, Ken Swack, a class of the World for All Wonders by RJ Plaskett, and a generous donation of $500 to a charity of their choosing. Ms. Rengers graciously chose the Seneca Valley Foundation as the recipient of that donation. So we thank her and congratulate her for her job. Very well done. Under these, remember, the month of October is the National Prisons Fund, as well as Breast Cancer Awareness Fund. Today is World Teachers Day. If you haven't had a chance to stop by our social media, please do. Give a shout out to our teachers who have posted there this evening. Today is also the first career-based learning model, which is a five-day intrapersonal instruction model. Next week, October 12th, we will be returning here for a school board regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. October 17th is a senior high school close to PSAT testing day. October 23rd is end of the first night weeks for Seneca Valley Academy of Choice cyber students, grades seven through 12. And then the 28th is the end of the first night weeks, seven through 12, for everyone else that is not in cyber. October 31st is Halloween, and then November 1st marks daylight savings time and the English names may roll to our backs back one hour. That is all I have. Mr. President, unless it's almost even more than percent questions.
So, any questions? Let's go. Um, no, please.
Our meeting is next Monday, because I think.
It's not just Tuesday.
Listen, you said.
No, it isn't.
But it is Monday. I'm not, I mean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, well, during our agency reports, the first would be of what the county, county verification. I attended meeting with Mr. Jacobs as our alternate last Thursday 1st. Not really much of a day to report. Pretty quiet. You know, they're working through the beginning of their school year issue as it relates to the pandemic and social distancing and masking, but so far things. Mr. Jacobs, again, thanks for coming out. We had all members of the board in the public. We took an opportunity to tour the facility after the students had left our power and, and our new principal here. So a good opportunity for Mr. Jacobs to learn a little bit more about the votes. Um, we'll turn to the IED for Mr. Tupid.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we were visiting safety businesses. And they discussed that one of the interesting things are to prepare to do the audit for 2019, 2020, and try to figure out how the auditors are going to do their field work. Things like that. So it's something that's, uh, was really thought of, maybe, or soon. There's, there's more discussion here on how to do that safely. So, we have a meeting in a month. They, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Tullio. Our next information reports are legislative reports. Uh, Mr. Mr. Peters, and I know you're kind of feeling 100% here with us via Zoom, but to keep it all, this is a process.
Mr. President, I'm only getting about every third word. So I'm going to go on the assumption you're hearing me, and I'll provide a written summary to the secretary for the minutes tomorrow. At the federal level, there's activity addressing financial relief for schools incurring significant non-budgeted expenses due to COVID-19 pandemic. However, that's the good news. However, those discussions are stalled, stalled in the House with little possibility of timely resolution. The president, before he was hospitalized, did sign a continuing resolution so that the government will not shut down as the new fiscal year begins without a budget. This, the continuing resolution will extend government operations until December 11th, at which time there will either be another continuing resolution, a, a vote on the budget to accept it, or the government will shut down. At the state level, the one, one item of interest is that just recently, House Bill 2696, which proposed school vouchers, has been withdrawn. Vouchers would have been provided, would have provided funds to families wishing to send students to non-public facilities and programs. This funding would have come at the expense of the public school community. The bill did not address allegations of financial mismanagement or questionable pedagogic performance on the part of these, these institutions which have been alleged. I'll emphasize that House Bill 2696 was tabled so that it can be brought back for discussion and vote very quickly. If the political winds dictate that, it does not have to go back to be reintroduced. And finally, I'll just remind everyone that, uh, next month, the 11th of November, of course, that Tuesday, is Election Day, and certainly hope that every member of the school board will get out and vote. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Peters, and my apologies for some of the potential sound issues. Does anyone have any questions? Is there any discussion around legislative items? To the Zoom. Thank you again. So we also are in receipt of our typical financial reports. They are in your backup. They are for operations, senior high activities, for intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics. Tax collections. And capital projects funds. As always, if you have any questions on any of those financial reports, please don't hesitate to reach out to Ms. Bertner. And our last information report, it looks like it's an external cyber charter update. And I imagine we're going to hear from both Dr. Vitale and Ms. Bertner. So, Dr. Vitale.
Yes, thank you very much. And I would remind the board when we're speaking in public, the closer you can get a microphone, that will help with the feedback in the room to the Zoom room for the meeting as well. I do want to make sure that the board is aware, and as many of you already know, and I want to make sure our public is aware, that we've had our own cyber school, the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice, for many years. I think we're going on 12, 13 years at this point. And we've been doing quite well with that as a learning option for students even pre-COVID. And during COVID, that was one of the choices that students could choose in our learning models. This year, we have about 1,400 students who decided to do full-time cyber in the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice. That does not cost our taxpayers any extra money, and we do not pay tuition to ourselves, as you can imagine. But I want to point out something that's different, and this is not a judgment. This is instead making sure that our public is aware. For many years also, there are external cyber charter schools, and there are brick-and-mortar charter schools. The cyber charter schools are approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Brick-and-mortar charter schools are typically approved by local school boards. Here at Seneca Valley, you could very well have an external cyber charter school in Philadelphia, and our students could attend that because it's online. This was all pre-COVID. This is not something new. But we have seen an increase that I want our board to be aware of. Today's total, we have 160 regular education students in external cyber charters, and that includes the brick-and-mortar charter schools. We have approximately 32 students in special education with those schools. The taxpayer at Seneca Valley School District will pay tuition on those students. We have 192 students in external cyber charter schools. Again, the taxpayer at Seneca Valley will pay that bill. And again, I'm not judging. Every parent needed to make a decision that was best for their family. But I am disappointed that we have people who have chosen the external cyber charters when we have our own charter school in-house. Now, that is for various reasons. Maybe they wanted to try something else. I do know our teachers have been working diligently to make sure parents are well-educated. We have had some come back. So this number is the current number, 192. It was up over 200 a couple of weeks ago. So I do know that once parents try another model and they don't like it, they may be come back, and, and that's fabulous. We love to have them back. I've written to every family that has chosen an external cyber charter or an external brick-and-mortar charter school, because we want them to be at Seneca Valley, not just because of the money, but because we feel that we have a quality program. We have such a quality program in our Seneca Valley Academy of Choice program that many other districts, upwards of 50 other districts across the state of Pennsylvania, pay this district the cost of a seat in our cyber program. And so it's just unfortunate that the cyber charter formula and the charter school formula has never been fixed by our legislators. And certainly, I know right now is a tough time for them to be looking at this, but they need to. Because while I tell you today we have 192, many of our neighboring schools have many, many more. So I also want to put a price tag on this, because this money is not budgeted. It's something that the board will need to look at their contingency fund for. So Ms. Bertner, if you could explain for our public the tuition cost for a regular education student that this district must write a check to another school for, and the cost for special education students that this district must write a check for. Now, this is different from parochial schools. We do not pay tuition to parochial schools. We do, however, according to the law, we must bus students 10 miles outside of our school district radius. And so even if you're going to a parochial school outside of our border, now that North Catholic anticolets are within our borders, I'm not talking about that, although we do provide busing to them as well. We are required to provide busing 10 outside of our border to any approved parochial school by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We are also required to provide nursing services. So when people say, well, why do you care if kids go to private parochial or the cyber schools? All of those are a cost to our local taxpayers. Now, I recognize philosophically, some of our parents might say, well, I pay taxes. And I know, I do pay taxes. I would remind you that your tax bill does not equal how many kids you typically have in the school system, at least mine doesn't, and many others in the district. And then I would remind you that there are many taxpayers in the district who have never had children, or their children have graduated. So this is not judgment. This is merely making sure we're educated as taxpayers, making sure that we understand what external cyber charters are, what they do, and what they cost, Ms. Bertner.
Yes, Dr. Vitale. The formula for calculating tuition for Seneca Valley students that attend charter schools is embedded in legislation, the charter school legislation. It is determined by the homeschool districts, meaning our school districts, budgeted costs with a rather convoluted formula. The tuition for this year for a non-special ed student, so we are talking about the 160 students that attend both cyber charters and brick-and-mortar charters. The annual tuition for each and every one of those students, assuming they attend for the full year, is $12,581.78 per child per year. The rate for a child identified as special education for cyber charter schools or a brick-and-mortar charter school is $30,053.77. Doing the math with the current, well, the enrollment from late last week yielded an estimated tuition bill for Seneca Valley to pay to charter schools at the end of this year or throughout the year, but totaling at the end of the year $2.975 million. Now, unfortunately, based on previous year's trends, we have currently budgeted this year $1.8 million. That difference is significant and will be challenging to overcome before the end of this year.
That's all we have, Mr. President. We want to make sure the public is aware, and later in the agenda, not for action this evening, but for deliberation this evening, and action next Monday is a resolution that we've put before the board that the Pennsylvania School Board Association has asked public schools to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. I, I know we have this resolution coming up later on in our agenda, that some will be taking action on next week. But if I could just take a second and read one quote from that resolution that talks about, after further analysis of PD data, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, in the 2014, 15 school year, so folks, that's five years ago. School districts paid charter schools more than $100 million for special education services in excess of what charter schools reported spending on special education. $100 million of your taxpayer money in excess of what it cost them. And I'll connect that note for you. That means there is excess being taken in by these cyber charter schools that they have the discretion to do more or less what they want with. It's profit. And we've got a system that has been in place for, I want to say it's been 23 years-ish. It needs to be updated. It's broken. It's broken. So I don't know that I've ever done this, but I'm going to take the opportunity to suggest to the 75 people listening online, and I'm not sure where all of you live. I know you're in the Seneca Valley School District, or at least I believe you are, but I live in Cranbury Township. Call out Representative Darryl Metcalf. Call out Senator Scott Hutchinson. And ask them why they aren't willing to or having us to step up and look to fix something that's broken to the total of, and again, folks, five years ago, and one piece of this, $100 million of your taxpayer money. It's, it's sad, and it's reprehensible in certain ways that we don't have a legislature that's willing to step up and make corrections that should be made for all of our benefits. And that's not just Seneca Valley. This is one district. There are 504 of them in the state of Pennsylvania. So folks, that's just a comment or two I had on that information report. I appreciate it from Dr. Vitale, Ms. Bertner. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add, Mr. Tullio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also point out a few things. Based on this, this $3 million that we're spending to external cybers, that equates to approximately 4.97 mils of tax rate, which is almost 4% of our total military. Put in perspective, that would, if we were to eliminate this cost to the district, that could take us back to the 2016 military. So we go back in time four years for where our mileage would be. So just when people are thinking about that, I mean, that's, that's the impact that we're seeing because of the way that we're forced to pay for, for this outside charter agency. So just a little more food for thought for everyone. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just follow up comment. You know, I don't want this to come across as, you know, a soapbox saying that I have anything against cyber education, because I don't. But at the end of the day, each district needs to compete, and we need to provide a quality product for the students who come from our district. And I echo Dr. Vitale's sentiments that it does surprise me that people are making choices when we have a program already. I'm just saying that to the extent that this is not a level playing field from a cost perspective, it should be. Apologies. I felt a little bit more emotional about something than I did when you do, but it's just such a, such a foreign inside of public education, say it honestly. Unless there's anyone else on this topic, we'll turn to our action agenda item. It's a brief one. I understand we have no request for public comment this evening, Elisa? Okay. And that agenda is simply personnel, and I'll make this motion. It is to approve resignation, appointments, contracted services, leaves, and financial incentive program as detailed in your backup and discussed in executive session. That is my motion. May I have a second, please? Ms. Waddle, thank you. Since we've had our discussion, we'll turn immediately to our role call, Elisa?
Ms. Waddle?
Yes.
Mr. Tullio?
Yes.
Ms. Sasse? Yes. Ms. Raydell? Yes. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Wooderson?
Yes.
Yes.
She's 19.
Thank you, Elisa. Next week, we take on further actions. One of them will be to approve minutes for our work session on September 14th of this year, and a regular meeting on September 21st of this year. Those minutes are in your backup. To approve the treasurer's report detailed in your backup, provided our general fund bills also provided a detail in your backup of $4,674,039.85. The construction fund bills also provided a detail in your backup and a grant total Anyone have any questions? Or if you do, please certainly feel free, as it relates to the numbers, to reach out to Ms. Bertner. We'll turn now to administration action. I believe this is up to the Dr. Vitale. Is that your name on your two? Is there any further comment? You have some resolutions?
And the resolution, we should read publicly so that the public can hear this. We will also post it with our agenda this week to our website.
Okay. I will take care of that. As soon as I.
This would also be the spot that if any board members disagree with any of these statements or want to, we need to hear that as administration to.
Okay, folks, bear with me. I'll try and speak clearly into the microphone and, and take my time through this so that you hear everything that I'm saying. This is a resolution calling for charter school funding reform by the Board of Directors of the Seneca Valley School District. Whereas the average Pennsylvania school district spends millions of dollars in taxpayer money annually in mandated payments to brick-and-mortar and cyber charter schools. And these payments are calculated in a manner which requires districts to send more money to charter schools than is needed to operate their programs, and places a significant financial burden on districts, resources, and taxpayers. And whereas the charter school, excuse me, the current charter school funding formula was established in 1997 under the state's charter school law and has not been changed in the 23 years since it was first created. And the formula for regular education programs is unfair because it is based on a school district's expenditures and not what it actually costs to educate a child in the charter school. And whereas the calculation for charter special education tuition is unfair because it is also based on the special education expenditures of the school district rather than the charter school. And although the General Assembly revised the special education funding formula in 2014, six years ago, to more accurately target special education resources for students identified with high, medium, and low needs, this formula was applied only to school districts and not to charter schools. And whereas. And whereas because tuition rate calculations are based on the school district's expenses, they create wide discrepancies in the amount of tuition paid by different districts for the same charter school education and result in drastic overpayments to charter schools. And these discrepancies in tuition rates for regular education students can vary by almost $13,000 per student and by $39,000 for special education students. And whereas the latest data from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, PDE, shows that in 2017, 2018, total charter school tuition payments, both for cyber and brick and mortar, were more than 1.8 billion, that's billion with a B, folks, with 519 million of that total paid by districts for tuition to cyber charter schools. And whereas, and this is the comment I mentioned earlier, further analysis of PDE data shows that in 2014, 2015, school districts paid charter schools more than $100 million for special education services in excess of what charter schools reported spending on special education. And whereas the cost of charter schools for school districts continue to grow significantly each year and on a streamlined basis are the most identified source of pressure on school district budgets. And whereas the need for significant charter school funding reform is urgent, and school districts are struggling to keep up with growing charter costs and are forced to raise taxes and cut staffing, programs, and services for their own students in order to pay millions of dollars to charter schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the fill-in-the-blank school board, which will be Seneca Valley, calls upon the General Assembly to meaningfully revise the existing flawed charter school funding systems for regular and special education to ensure that school districts and taxpayers are no longer overpaying these schools or reimbursing for costs that the charter schools do not incur. We, along with Pennsylvania School Boards Association, are advocating for substantial change, and it would be adopted in a certain date of October in 2020, would be my signature and our board secretary. So folks, I think you can tell by the way I've read through this how I feel about it. I'll open it up for discussion or deliberation from members of the Seneca Valley Board in advance of looking to take action on this next week. Check into the penthouse meeting. Okay, folks, thank you for taking the time. So let me read through that. We'll turn to business and finance action items. There is just one, Mr. Jacobs, if you could walk us through that, please?
Thank you. Next week, we'll look for the approval of one item related to a potential bond issue, which is approve the appointment of PNC Capital Markets LLC as financial advisor and Dinsmore and Show L.L.P. as bond counsel related to the outstanding and anticipated debt findings in connection with the school district's proposed and developing plans for capital improvements and facilities, which is included in your backup.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Is there any discussion, any questions on this particular item this evening? Okay, seeing none. Next week, Mr. Whitson, you are online. We will have some further personnel action items, so we will discuss those in our executive session, and we will bring them to the board for approval at that point in time. And just finally, of notes, we are in receipt of many pieces of communication. Some of them are notes of thanks, some are in support of the move just today, on October 5th, to the full-time in-person instruction. A good number are in opposition to that, which we certainly don't want to just hear from the people who agree with us. We welcome communication from those that don't necessarily. And a variety of other topics. Before I move to motion to adjourn, I'll just check around the room to see if there's any new business, Mr. Petulio. Very quickly, I just wanted to notify everyone that I did submit my ballot for reelection to the teachers' board of directors. I did also find out that there is at least one other person that submitted an application to run, and they're having an issue of getting basically a roll sheet from PSCA to verify that all the names that are on the petitions are assigned or actual school board members. So I don't know what the timeframe is going to be as far as getting a ballot out to everyone, but I'll make sure that I let everyone know and spread the word to all the districts to vote for me to be the school board director. So thank you. You're welcome. I know Dr. Patel has more items. I just put a part two, so that whatever you got there, Dr. Patel, I just, I can't let the evening pass without taking just a minute. I mean, it is Monday, October 5th, and as we all know, as I mentioned just a moment ago, our students have returned to Friday, we in-person instruction. And I know it hasn't been an easy process. I know we have in some respects agreed to disagree on the topic. I just want to take a minute and just give my own personal thanks to the professionals, really to the entire staff that came to work today, ready to serve our students, with some trepidation, I know, in certain situations. And we are, I am just always thankful for the dedication and passion that our teachers and all of our professionals bring to, to the job. And in particular, with everything that is swirling around us, it's, these are tough times, and I just wanted to make sure that I, you know, again, one person, Jim Nichol, just took a minute to say thank you. And I know that my, my colleagues on the board feel the same way. I just thought that we needed to, we needed to say that, so thank you. Dr. Patel, any initial?
Thank you. You took the words out of my mouth. That's okay. We work together as a team, but I also want to mention two things. So when you think about thanking teachers, I hope that our, sometimes, you know, we don't hear from people, and that may be good and that may be bad, and I hope that our parents are reaching out to talk to our teachers about how grateful they are because today really was fabulous, but this won't be easy. It won't be easy moving forward. We will have cases. We will need contact trace with the Department of Health, and that is a difficult process. Our nurses are working diligently. Everyone is working very hard, teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, everyone. And so I would be remiss also if I didn't share with you that even what you see tonight looks easy to pull off, having some of us on Zoom and some of us here in person, and it is not. It took our tech department and four other people working on this on Friday and today to make it happen. So I want to take a moment to thank our technology department, and especially Tim Hall, who's in the back, who is one of those people that's been with us for a very long time, who works diligently and often just, you know, doesn't get any credit. So I want to thank you, Tim. And I want to thank everybody who's been part of this team to get us to today. And I want to remind parents that you will need to be patient with us. If we have cases, we will tell you. We will not hide those. And I know there has been some rumors about, oh, no, they have more cases. No, we have one elementary child, we got a letter on it from several weeks ago, and one support personnel person on the campus, and that's all we've had. However, some people may have COVID at home, parents or family members. We don't send letters out on that. And if a child has it, they're in full-time cyber. We would not send a letter on that. It's only if we have children that are in the buildings and they have it and we learned that they have it and they potentially could have exposed others, or adults who could have exposed others, you will hear from us. We will not hide that. There's no need to. We want people to be safe. We want to be open. We also need parents to be patient because if there is a situation where a child has been in a classroom and they are less than six feet away for more than 15 minutes, which in this model will happen, it will happen on our buses, it will happen in our classrooms, we may need to shut down a class, and when that happens, please, you know, you have to be patient with us. This is the best we can do. I'm very pleased with what I saw today. I visited a number of buildings. People say, how can you social distance in the cafeteria? I was here at the Intermedia High School today. Lots of plexiglass because I can social distance in the cafeteria. This district has invested in mitigations, and that's how we were able to open our doors when others could not. Even having those mitigations and having our teachers be diligent about those mitigations and our staff being diligent, we will have cases because if you have community transmission, it comes into your buildings. So we will keep you updated, and we will do everything in our power to keep the case numbers low. But my final thank you again to teachers who teach in these masks all day long. And, you know, people say, well, just fine treatment, see, see. Okay, what you saw tonight was two days to put together. I want to remind you of that. And it's one teacher in the classroom trying to get this done. I've had six to 10 people working on this for two days, so I want to remind you of that. And when it comes to, I see people in the grocery store that'll pull their mask down, you know, below the nose or take it off. See, this is so hot, I can't breathe. It takes me everything in my power not to stop them and go try teaching in it for seven hours. So teachers, please know we are with you. We are behind you. You heard Mr. Nichol. We know this is not easy. We knew it wouldn't be easy, but you are doing it, and I am so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. Unless there's any other new business, I'll see you later.
Mr. President?
Was that you, Mr. Whitson?
It is. Can you hear me okay? My volume, my audio is clear.
So my apologies, I just didn't see that you had moved your mic. So finally, what's, what's on your mind?
First off, to, to follow up on Dr. Patel, I'd like to thank the, the teachers and all of the people that work behind the scenes to make this district what it is. It's certainly an honor to, to be on the board and work with this fine staff. Just a quick question. I came home and I apologize for the short notice. I, I looked at the positivity rate for Butler County, and I admit that my information may be a day or two old, but not much more than that. But right now, Butler County is showing an 11.3% positivity rate. When, or I guess better yet, what, the better question is, what guidance will the board use to decide if it's time to move back to the cohort or to go into full remote learning, given the fact that the recommendations of the PDE and the Department of Health were ignored?
Well, I suggested I turn to Dr. Patel. You probably will work this speed of the numbers behind the screen, but I will offer some commentary as well.
The instructional model that Mr. Whitson is referring to is a link on the Pennsylvania Department of Education website, and it takes your county and it takes your daily cases. It takes the current set of days, compares the cases to the last seven days. In that model they are using, they are also recommending instructional models. Those are recommendations, not requirements. And yes, the board chose to come back five days a week, and Butler County is still listed in the moderate. I will add that there is additional data that has been given to the board that I'm always willing to share. I've shared it with parents who have asked as well. In my office, Lisa and I work together to gather daily case rates from the county, and then we do a 14-day rolling average. That is not what the Pennsylvania Department of Education is doing or the Department of Health, but I think it's an important model for the board to look at and the community to often see. It is a model that an internationally recognized doctor epidemiologist out of the University of Minnesota, Sid Rapp, uses, and we are looking at, looking at that as another view of the cases. In addition, we take the zip codes from Seneca Valley, so all of the communities where our students live, and Lisa gathers that rate every day. And in that one, it's not a daily rate like you see in the county. That doesn't exist. This is from the Pennsylvania Department of Health website. It is how many cases has each zip code logged since the beginning of the pandemic, but you can see the daily change as we log those each time it's updated. So we're looking at those numbers as well. Mr. Whitson's question is something that the board, you know, that, that is something you'll have to weigh in on if and when you get more cases. I should say when, not if, because we know that all school districts are facing these. Many school districts have been doing contact tracing over the weekend and this week. We also know that there are recommendations, again, not requirements, but recommendations from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and it is what prepaid to grade 12 schools should follow in the identification of a case. And in these charts, they take your county and the level of transmission. Again, Butler County is still at the moderate rate. And so you're right, Mr. Whitson, that transmission rate, I looked at it this morning, in the county, that is not for the district, but it is for the county. And we, we look at that, and that's something that we're constantly reminding the school board about and reminding our parents about. We are not in the low rate. We are in the moderate, in the middle. Some counties have moved a substantial, is my understanding, last week, Indiana County moved a substantial. And Indiana County is a fairly rural county outside of the town and the, and the college there. So, you know, it's been surprising where you're seeing some of these rates pop up. In the chart that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has given us, it tells us how many cases, and it's speaking to recommended shutdowns. So what would it take to have temporary shutdowns? That's different than what Mr. Whitson asked. He's asking about the cohort model, and certainly the board can weigh in on that if they so choose. Because we have voted, the board has voted to go to the five-day model, I have to pay attention to cases and where we may fall when it comes to temporary shutdowns of anywhere from three to five days or 14 days are the recommendations in the low. Butler County is not yet in the low transmission rate. We're in the moderate. So our scale would be five to seven days or 14 days should our cases become two to four, student staff in the same building, or more than 5% total numbers of student staff in a school building, or multiple school buildings with individual cases. So they give you different scenarios. And this would be individuals who are not household contacts, and they combine the adults with the students. The next level is if you would have five or more students and staff in the same school building, what that closure period would be. So we have this link. It is under our COVID resources posted on our district website. This is something the board had, our teachers had, but if parents, I recognize some parents weren't thinking about this, and so we just want to remind people that just because we're back five days a week does not mean we will be able to continue five days a week should cases arise. It's why it's very important that we do everything we can in our communities to keep the transmission rate low so that we can keep our schools open. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. Again, I appreciate your, your closer to the numbers than it did at a basis than I might be. I would just say that, because I don't believe that there's any one item of data that we can hone in on. There's, there's a lot of data coming from a lot of different directions, a lot to consider. But what I, I don't know necessarily that you included in your comments, Mr. Whitson, is that we also need to consider, and this is what we deliberated on in our meeting in September, considering the risks associated with our students if they continue to remain at home, even in a cohort model. And again, we could, we could open up and have the same sort of deliberation we've had recently. Collectively, this board has, has made a decision to go to the full-time five-day a-week instruction, but that doesn't mean that I personally, in almost a daily communication with Dr. Patel and his leadership team, I'm going to continue to look at, you know, what happens in that data and all those data points as we continue through October and then on into the school year. So I'm fairly certain that doesn't specifically answer your question. You know, you and I have had some side conversations. We have agreed to disagree, but I still believe that we've made a great decision to offer five-day-a-week instruction, taking a multitude of factors of data points in consideration. So again, I'm not sure if that answers your question specifically, and you're welcome to add further comment, but that's, that's the reply you got from me for this interview, Mr. Whitson.
So, so. Thank you. I caught most of what you said. I think that will suffice for this evening, given the fact that I'm having problems again with audio.
So, Mr. Nichols, I do want to make a comment, please?
Please.
Thank you. I, I do request that at our regular school board in each month, that we do bring this up, put it on the agenda, and we have a discussion. We see the numbers on the regular school board meeting, and we have an opportunity to make a motion if necessary. I don't think we ought to be just guessing whether we're going to be on it. I think we ought to make sure we put it on our regular school board meeting each month. So I do humbly request that. Thank you.
And responding, we can talk again offline. I mean, my response to you at this point is that I don't have any plans to include each and every month an agenda item, reconsidering the decision. Hey, that doesn't. an agenda item reconsidering the decision made. That doesn't mean that we may not see some things that suggest that we should have a conversation and deliberation about it. And you're certainly welcome, any member of the board, welcome to put a motion in front of the board. And if it's seconded, we will deliberate it. But again, we can talk offline, Mr. Hester, but I don't at this point in time foresee including an agenda item each and every month reconsidering the decision that is made. And unless there's any other thoughts or comments, and I do appreciate both Mr. Hester and Mr. Wooderson, your comments here at the end of the meeting. I'll look around the room here one last time. And since I don't see hands raised even for folks on our Zoom screen, I will again look for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vitulio, second from Ms. Harrison. I'll flagrably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any close nay? Okay, folks, thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you to the 65 folks who've joined us this evening. There was one individual with a hand raised on the Zoom call. Unfortunately, we can't respond to that, but by all means, if you have a question, feel free to reach out to me.